I just opened. Try it again. Are you connected here, Terry? Turn that sound off. Well. Okay. Does anybody have this enabled on their phone? Yes. I'm not in here. Standby, councilor, trying to get this echo out of here. All right, everybody. We'll call this evening's meeting of the Peoria City Council to order before we do. Before we do the roll call. We'll make sure everybody's muted. Getting a lot of feedback here. Here we go. Yeah. If I need to read this electronic attendance memo before we get started here. In accordance with Governor J.B. Pritzker's executive orders 2020-10 issued on March 20th prohibiting all public and private gatherings of 10 people or more in a single room or single space at the same time. And 2020-18 issued on April 1st extending executive order 2020-10 through April 30th. As well as the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention's recommendations of gatherings of no more than 10 people in a single room or space and social distancing of at least six feet between persons. Mayor Artis declared a local state of emergency and closed City Hall to the public to contain the spread of COVID-19. To fulfill the requirements, recommendations, and to comply with the Spirit of the Open Meetings Act by conducting the April 21st 2020 special City Council meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. Those City Council members attending the meeting virtually shall be declared present. Citizens and media are invited to watch through the online stream, local TV channel 22, or WCBU radio. Submissions for public comment were received through the City Clerk's office. In addition, for those listening or watching tonight's meeting. The materials for the meeting have been uploaded for the public at peoria.gov.org under Council Meeting Information. That said, Madam Clerk, could you please call?
Mayor Artis.
Here.
Councilmember Ali.
Here.
Councilmember Sears.
Here.
Councilmember Grab. Councilmember Grab. Councilmember Grab. Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Montalongo.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Euler. Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Rigenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Rut Regal.
Here.
You have a form present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This time we'll have a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is the strength of one nation, under God, indivisible, so that we can never stop.
Our first item is 20-081. Communication from the City Manager with a request received in file. A presentation on the impact of COVID-19 relating to the city's budget.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have a follow-up presentation that we'd like to share for you pertaining to the 2020 budget and the COVID-19 situation and pandemic that we're facing again. As we stated last week, really, council's role is to help us to define the parameters of spending in a time of crisis and ensuring that the business continuity of public services. As we put the presentation together, we came across this quote from George Washington that we that we really thought was apropos, that we must consult our means rather than our wishes at this point in time with where we are. Looking at the the presentation, we talked, as we were putting the presentation together, we we took a look at what the National League of Cities was saying, and there are many cities our size throughout the country that are facing the same problems that we are. And this is just looking at what the the cities our size are anticipating. Nearly 98% are anticipating some form of revenue decline. 63% anticipate having to cut public services. More than half of all cities have reported that the police will be affected. 55% will furlough employees and 36% will be laying off employees. What are some of our larger cities doing? Many of our larger cities throughout the country are are looking at at trying to balance their budgets as well. Los Angeles, California, is looking at 26 furloughs days for thousands of employees and a 10% pay cut. Nashville, Tennessee's mayor came out this week and said they're looking at a 20% property tax increase. Hamilton County, Ohio, is looking at a 20% cut across the board. Cincinnati, Ohio, has furloughed 1,700 municipal employees. Phoenix, Arizona, is looking at a 25% cut, looking at aggressive fund transfers, and then looking to prepare for a shortfall anywhere from $25 to $100 million. And Detroit, Michigan, is looking at layoffs and furloughs as well. Excuse me. So as we looked at our, as we said last week, our 2025 budget outlook, if we looked over the next five years, we had pretty much balanced the budget. We were in pretty good shape as we looked forward. But now COVID-19 has really thrown a loop into that. And and what we're seeing is that, as we we mentioned last week, our estimate of the gap is $54 million. Granted, 15 million of that is bonding that we wouldn't be doing. So hang on just a second. Make sure that this is, is that showing now? I just want to make sure everyone can see it. Okay. Very good. Okay, now, sorry about that. Technical difficulties on my end. So as we're looking at this, the the gap that we're facing is $54 million. While we don't know the shape of the curve, what staff attempted to do over this last week was to look at at some projections of what that shape of that curve might look like. So within that, as we move forward, the next is a V-shaped curve, which would be the most fastest recovery, where we might see that the economy bounces back after a slow period of time. We may lose one or two years of revenue, but then we bounce back to where we were. And so that's the V-shaped recovery. Looking at a U-shaped recovery, here we may see that that the the shape of the curve, it looks more like a U, that we end up bottoming out with significant revenue losses. And that we don't maybe not even get back to exactly where we had started within this curve. So this is just an estimate of what those a U-shaped recovery might look like, where it takes us more years to look at that. As a quick aside here, I would say that as we started to look at our our largest revenue streams, our sales tax revenues, our income tax revenues, many of those revenues, once we had the Great Recession of 2008, many of those took two or three years to bounce back. And that's something that we'd need to be mindful of as we plan ahead. The the third shape of a recovery that we would look at would be an L-shaped. This is probably the most conservative view. There is no bounce in the recovery, but rather we we tend to work from a new norm, and we see that we have lower rates of revenue growth over the long term, and we may never get back back to the revenues that we currently have. So while we don't know the shape of what the the revenues will look like as they as they bounce back as part of this recession, we do know that we need to make changes, and we do know that we need to address service delivery in light of these changes, in light of the challenges that we're seeing with with the the economy. In a best case, I think we're we're really concerned that we might see the revenue downturn lasts for two years before we fully bounce back. So with that, just looking at our cash position for this year, what we wanted to to point out, and we did a little analysis, if we were to continue through the year, through October, we would draw down about $16 million. And then at towards the end of the year, when we have to make our debt service payments, and we have other payments to other funds that are due, $38 million would be drawn down in November and December. So that would draw almost all of our cash reserves down at that point in time. So what are we looking at? We're looking at several levers that we're going to have to look at at trying to institute. That would include not only reducing capital projects, as we discussed last week, but also operating reductions, whether that would be some form of workforce reductions, outsourcing, or or other service reductions. It would mean borrowing and debt management. What can we do to address this in the short term? And then lastly, do we want to draw down a portion of our cash reserves in order to sustain this and maintain services during this period of time? So what do those borrowing options look like? We've had a conversation, the the Finance Director and I have had a conversation with our financial advisor, Spear Financial, about looking at at new forms of debt. Are there are there opportunities for us to look at potentially issuing a working working capital bond that would allow us to generate some some cash for just that, for working capital? New debt would require a repayment source, and that's something that we need to be thinking of. If we look at a line of credit in the short term, and we've issued an RFP, sent it out to a number of different banks throughout the Midwest, as well as local banks here in in the region, we would have to look at a short-term borrowing opportunity. This would also need a repayment source. So we should hope to have more information here very soon, but we're continuing to work on that. The third option and the third lever on the borrowing front would be restructuring, looking at how we could lower our debt service payments in 2021 and beyond. It's probably too late for us to look at at doing something this year, but we're going to continue to have those conversations with our financial advisors to see what we can do. And then the last option would be looking at pushing out our debt. This is in the in the vernacular of the finance and municipal bond world called a scoop and toss, where we would take much of our principal that we have that may be due right now and extend it out and look at trying to lower our debt service payments. So that would be one option that we would look at as well. So so we're looking at a number of different financial fronts at this point in time to see what we can come up with. On the capital reduction side, as we discussed, we've we've identified $26.7 million of capital reductions for 2020. Most of those reductions will not help within the general fund, where most of our personnel costs are. We will need to continue it's at, you know, whatever we anticipate to be the new normal for several years to look at, we can balance our capital spending with available resources. Obviously, we're going to continue to pursue external sources of of grant funding. IDOT is still proceeding with with a number of different bond projects that are part of the capital plan. They're going to continue to to do their work, but they also have some local funding sources, competitive grant sources that are available that we're looking at for several projects right now. And then we're going to also look at, can we break some of our projects into smaller pieces over a few years? So while capital reductions can be a strong contributor, even with that, we're looking at at what we can try and do to balance the budget for the long term here. On the operating side, we are looking at operating changes, whether we can reduce our our services, whether we can look at furloughs or laying off staff if that's a need be, looking at whether or not we can impose some pay cuts or implement pay cuts for some of our employees. And then do we look at restructuring or outsourcing as well? And then lastly, we're trying to put all of this together. And as I mentioned to you from council, and I sent this to you yesterday in an email, if tonight, if we could really get from you, what direction you want to go with from the the capital improvements, as outlined last week, that would be helpful, in a general sense. We don't have to have and go through every specific project at this point in time. And as I said, from a borrowing standpoint, we're continuing to to look at all four of the options that I just previously outlined to see if we could provide the fiscal relief for this year. We're not going to have the answers tonight, but we're hopeful that we'll have some more answers and be able to provide more information to you next week. And then on the operating side, if we can get some guidance from you on what what, if any, are there operating reductions that you would support? I don't need specifics generally this evening, but some general guidance on the relative amount would be helpful. This allows us to formulate and structure our response so that we can provide some scenarios for you to consider at future council meetings. And so with that, I will stop sharing my screen and move over to answer any questions the council may have.
So, Mr. Manager, in terms of the the three areas that you're looking for direction on, which were basically the same three areas that we had discussed last week. But I think what we'll try to do is get motions in those areas, just so we can make sure that the very first thing we're doing tonight is giving you that direction that you need to bring us back those different scenarios. And then, and when we do that, if there's any questions on the report backs or any additional information that the council would like you to bring back for us next week, we'll do it at that time. So, well, as the manager said, the three areas that we're looking for are reinforcement of the one thing that we did advise on last Tuesday, which was the $26.7 roughly million in capital reductions. So we don't anticipate going line item on those tonight. I think it would be appropriate for council members between this week and next week, if you have a specific item in your district or in in the area that you would like the manager to look at or reconsider, have that conversation with him. And at the same time, you'll need to be prepared to talk to council members about supporting that change next week. So in the capital area, what we're really trying to do tonight is not go in item by item, but but confirm that roughly that ballpark of $26.7 million is what the manager has to work with. Then the second area will be the information which I think all of us want to see, which is that potential, the financing, potential financing mechanisms, whether it's line of credit or refinancing, pushing out the debt, new debt. That's, I think that's something that we all want to see when you have that information back from Spear Financial. We know you don't have that tonight, but that's going to play into the decision that we make next week. And then finally, on the operating side, I think similar to the capital, the City Manager is asking us for a window to, for, you know, potentially looking at any reductions or restructuring. What would that window look like? So there'll have to be separate motions, but if we can try to concentrate on those three areas first to provide the manager with the the framework that he's looking for, and then we'll go to to other issues. So I have a number of questions here. Hopefully, we can, before we go down a potential rabbit hole, if we can focus on the three areas the manager's looking for specific information on, then we'll have time for for Q and A as well. So I have Councilmember Ali.
Thank you, Mayor Artis. I do have a quick question before going to those three areas. I'm just, if you can, Mr. City Manager, let me know, what is the current balance in cash reserves and what is considered to be a safe level for a city our size?
We had, maybe if I could ask Director Scroggins if he could jump in here, and we can follow up with the the report back that we had issued to you last week, which had those cash reserves in it. Director, do you want to jump in here if you can?
Sure. Our current cash level on hand right now is about $48 million. What is a safe level? Our reserves are, by policy, are supposed to be 25% of whatever our expenditures are. That would be approximately $25 million just for the operating fund, general fund. The $48 million we have on hand is across all funds. This would include the Stormwater Fund, all of our special revenue funds, and restricted funds as well. I don't know if that answered your question, but that's where we are with cash.
Yes, you did. Thank you, Mr. Scroggins. And Mayor, I'll I'll circle back around. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I had Councilmember Jensen next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few questions about the report back. Is it, can I go ahead, Mr. Mayor, and do those now, or do you, I'm also prepared to make a motion?
We're trying to make sure that we're giving the the City Manager those those three areas of broad parameters to bring back information without, you know, going way left or way right. I guess if it's particular to the motion that you're going to make, it would be appropriate to ask a question on that portion before you make the motion.
Okay. I guess generally, then I'll give some some general direction and and make my motion. I, as you know, support the proposed capital reductions. And I think that's, you know, first where we need to start. And I also think that we need to look at restructuring our debt, pursuing a line of credit, and also going into our reserves. I I think those two things need to be done first before we look at different scenarios for operating reductions. I guess I would like to get information back when you look at those, Mr. City Manager, on what the what different types of furlough plans there could be, and what different, like if everybody were furloughed for a certain amount of days, what that cost savings would be? Maybe potentially look into closing City Hall one day a week and only be an open four days a week. Would that have an impact on our budget? Those types of things. And with those comments, I would like to make a motion to defer the capital improvement projects, as outlined in the City Manager's recommendation from our meeting last week, totaling $26.7 million.
And so, Council, just to thank you for the motion, this this is not a solid action item that says, as printed, those will be the items. The this motion is to support that that basic package that the manager came back with. And between now and the time when we make this final decision, there can still be some discussion on that area. So I don't want anybody to get, if there's one particular item or several particular items, it's not, this is not the vote that will actually make this happen. This is the vote that tells the manager, he's in the ballpark of what we're comfortable looking at towards the final budget solution, okay? Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. That, it, the video just came across the same time you said that. We must have a little bit slow. So we have a motion in the second on the, basically reaffirmation of what the direction was that we gave the City Manager last week. Is there, is there a discussion on the motion? And I have Councilman Rigenbach first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate the efforts of the City Manager and his team in coming up with this. I appreciate the explanation from you, Mr. Mayor, as to what we're actually voting on. And I just want all of our constituents, because I'm sure we've all been inundated with emails, that we know there has to be some serious adjustments made, and this is the first step in in making that a reality. So while you all know I've got certain questions about specific projects, I think the concept is solid and needs to be forward, move forward, so I will be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this motion? Okay, I'm not, I'm not registering any on.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not registering any on the chat bar, so Madam Clerk, could you please call the floor?
Mr. Mayor, I ask to be recognized, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilman, I'm not, I'm not showing you on my screen.
There's a few that's out there.
So, for some reason, my screen isn't showing, we just got a couple more that just fell in. So, okay, we have several. So, I'm showing Councilman Grab, then Kelly, then Moore, then Ali. So, Councilman Grab will go first. Councilmember Grab, make sure you're off mute. Okay, Councilman Grab, if you can take yourself off mute, the floor is yours. Okay, Councilman Grab will come back to you. Councilman Kelly, I have you next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very much like last week, I would like to discuss some of our options. I think we're going to ask the manager to bring us back several scenarios, which may be, scenarios may be, in Public Works, they might be greater or less than that very specific number. I'd like to know, for instance, in the operations area, what a 5% layoff would generate, what a 10% layoff would generate, but, you know. I think that we need to be speaking about scenarios rather than specific big items in the budget. I think it's, I thought it was preliminary, or it was, yeah, too preliminary last week. It didn't, it almost didn't mean anything. And I don't know how much it means right now, except to say, Mr. Manager, we need, whatever the number is, 40, 27 point, you know, whatever, million dollars. I don't, I don't know that I'm comfortable in giving him that kind of direction. I think everything should be on the table, and we need to talk about what the dimensions are of the thoughts that we have, rather than getting all that specific at this point. And I don't, I don't want to talk about this road project, or that road project, or this, you know. I want to give the manager a lot of leeway to bring us some scenarios. I don't want to pin him down like this.
Councilman, yeah, Councilman Kelly, you're welcome. So what we're not doing tonight is pinning him down. What we're doing tonight is giving him parameters that he can bring those options back to us.
I hope that that's known.
We spent four and a half hours last week of talking platitudes and never gave him any direction.
That is right.
So tonight, we're going to take the three areas that he's asking us to give parameters, and giving him parameters. We're not giving him specifics. We're giving him parameters. So, once he has those parameters, he'll be able to come back to us with different potential areas within those three tranches, and then we can do a deeper dive on what that means, whether it's in the refinancing debt service side, or if it's in the capital budget, or if it's in the operating side. And so, right now...
Well, if we have a motion that has a number on it, Mr. Mayor, that seems to limit his flexibility.
Well, he has to, we have to give him parameters of, he is, the manager is the one that came to us and said, we can probably do a 26.7. If we want to tell him to do it with 36.7, we can. If we want to tell him to do it with 6.7, we can. It's all, it's all an exercise of how we're going to arrive at a number, whether it's 30 million, or 40 million, or 50 million.
I understand. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand. I just, I'd like to hear about what the potential is in the other areas as well, before we say, okay, let's go from here to here on operations, let's go from here to here on Public Works, let's go from here to here on debt, you know, et cetera.
That's, that's what will happen next week.
Well, that's not what the motion is, Mr. Mayor.
The motion is to give the manager a roughly 26.7 million dollars on the capital side. That's what the motion is.
26.7, that sounds pretty exact. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Those are, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I had Councilmember Moore next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From what I understand, if, I think you said earlier, that of that 26.7 million dollars, there may be some things that are, if I understood correctly, added or subtracted by district. If I came in and said, you know, I really think this one particular project needs to go on anyway, potentially that could be pulled in, because we are not, this is not engraved in stone, is what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Okay. So, I wanted to explain the reason why I second this motion, to provide the direction to look at this 26.7 million as a discussion starter, is so that we understand that we, the money is about to be limited, we have no money, that we have, everybody has to take some cuts. And the first district is, if any district, the first district, can least afford to have any Public Works cuts. However, because we understand also that we are part of this, this community, that everybody has to take a little bit of something off the top, we're willing to wait our turn so that when funds are available again, that we're just taking a pause. The first district is not going to go back to the back of the line, that when monies are reestablished, whether that's by borrowing or anything else, that we lift the pause button, and everybody who's in line, no matter where they are, will come back in the same place. And that is upon which I'm seconding the motion to move forward. But I would advocate, as we get to the next section after this, after we move on from here, that we look at borrowing so that essential city services are not reduced to the point where the city goes to someplace that we don't want it to be. We cannot afford to pull back on essential city services after that last budget a year or so ago. We hit, we hit the wall at that point. And so when we, I can't wait for us to get to the discussion of people, because we can't afford to lose anybody. So, thank you.
Thank you. So just, just so council knows, we're still on the motion on the capital budget parameter of approximately 26.7 million dollars. I had Councilmember Ali and Councilmember Grab.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Artis. Last week, I voted yes to support this, and it was based upon the clarifications that you had made to the motion. Of course, Councilwoman Jensen made the motion, and then you made some clarifications to the motion. Again, here tonight, she made the motion, and her motion was as outlined, 26.7 million as outlined by the city manager, which lists specific projects. And then you made a clarification again to the motion. So it concerns me, I guess, that she didn't make those clarifications in her motion, and we're voting on the motion as stated by her without being amended by her. So I have some concerns on that. I would, I guess I would like clarification by the councilwoman who made the motion, so that it's clear what we're voting on. And, you know, of course, I would have rather liked to see a range, you know, if we were voting on, you know, a range of 20 to 30 million in projects to be brought back and But I understand the intent is that these are not solid decisions in terms of as outlined, but they were outlined. So, that's, so I have some discomfort about what I'm voting on right now.
So this, so it's clearly in the record, will indicate clearly that any of the actions that we're making tonight are not final. It's all giving the manager feedback. If Councilwoman Jensen would like to adjust her motion to give Councilmember Ali comfort, you're welcome to do so. Councilmember Jensen?
I mean, I don't want to change the motion so that it's a big range. My motion is basically the same as it was last time with the same leeway. I'm directing, or my motion is to authorize the city manager to make reductions in our capital improvement project budget for the rest of the year, you know, giving him leeway to do it in a manner as outlined in his council communication to us, to, a week, more than a week ago.
So that communication was specific?
But he, like, the mayor said, I mean, and this is how we've always handled these issues during our budget discussions each year, it, the city manager has leeway after discussions with council to come back with a final proposal, or, you know, or even more than one proposal, under those parameters.
Councilmember Moore, are you still okay with the second on this motion?
I believe we're, I think we're all saying the same thing. I think we're getting a little caught up on semantics.
Thank you.
Because the clarification that, Mr. Mayor, you provided, in the records, I believe it speaks to what Councilwoman Ali would like to hear. It didn't come right out of Councilwoman Jensen's mouth, and I don't want to put any words in your mouth, Councilwoman Jensen, but if your motion is to be amended as directed by the mayor, I think that would give comfort to Councilwoman Ali. I'm just guessing, Councilwoman Ali, what do you think about that?
That would be helpful to me. I mean, she's the one who's making the motion, so I want to, we're responding to that.
Okay, so why don't we just, we'll go back to being recognized through the chat column, and so, just so we don't get a real broad conversation going here. The motion in the second is on the floor. All of this will come back. This is not, there's nothing final about this motion. It's a, it's giving the manager recommendations to fit within a framework to bring us back to make final decisions. Councilmember Ali, were you finished?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I had Councilmember Grab next.
Mayor, I apologize for being muted. I'm just beginning to intelligently navigate. I hope we can get back into the council chambers as soon as possible in accord with the social distancing practices. So, it would make it much easier as we discuss issues of this magnitude, but I think we would all second that motion, and it'd be unanimous vote. I like everything that has been said. However, Manager, I do have a question. It may seem strange that I would ask this, but this could have ramifications. For example, on some of these road projects, is there any danger, and I'm thinking, well, let's just not mention the district, but I can think of one, that we might lose federal budget dollars, federal grant dollars, if we press the pause button?
Unmuted here, thank you. Councilman, thank you for that really good question. What we tried to do, we tried to look at where those large capital projects that may have state or federal funding, when is that deadline for us to get the projects let, or to get the projects started so that we don't lose any of that funding? And we are, with all the recommendations that are in that package that was there at last week's meeting, there's nothing that we would lose any funding. We just have to make sure we start some of those projects next year in order to get them going, so that we can, we can make it at that time.
Would that include Western Avenue, Manager?
Yes.
Okay. And projects that were already in the pipeline but were delayed last year because of rain, and you know which one I'm talking about, the second district, would that be to the top of the line because it was rained out last year, once we get things going again?
So the, the portion that was rained out last year, that work should be undertaken right now, that should be going forward. That, we've really looked at, at 2019 projects as just that. They're 2019 projects, they're going to go forward. So the, the next section, though, on Sheridan, which is that Eleanor Richman's phase, is the part that would be held off until 2021. So...
And we did have that money appropriated, the council did approve that, correct?
That is correct. You are correct, sir.
All right, I appreciate the contributions of my colleagues. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I had Councilmember Euler next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I went over these items already with the manager in meeting, but just would like to reiterate for the record, just so that, you know, there's full disclosure here, that I know that there's going to be a level of borrowing that has to be done to secure this budget, but I prefer to see the borrowing attached more towards capital projects rather than running the operation and freeing up dollars that may have been appropriated before for capital projects, to release those to run the operation, and allow us to borrow against long-term needs for the city, which in my mind, significantly, the need for road repair. And I would like to ensure that what comes back to us as far as the capital projects list is still allowing us to progress with some road repair work, because we can't just halt everything that funnels our future here. That may mean that we have to do more road resurfacing rather than complete tear-out and replacement, and we may have to put things like new sidewalks and ornamental lighting on hold, but we've got to get some road dollars out there and get some of these roads resurfaced. Thank you.
Thank you. I had Councilmember Montalongo next.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Manager, just a quick comment on the Glen Avenue reconstruction. And this was one that I brought up last, last week, in how you prioritize roads or projects to be done. The longer we wait on Glen Avenue, the more money we're going to be putting into this. As we continue to patch, I can't imagine the amount of money that we're paying to patch and repatch this. The road does have to be reconstructed, so we're just like wasting money doing these patches. My concern, as we are taking 1 million dollars out of this reconstruction project, leaving 820,000 in there, one of the areas that we discussed, and I did not get a response back from Public Works, was the land acquisition, which was something I brought up last fall. And that seems to be one of the parts of the project that takes the longest to do in order to move forward. I feel like if we don't get that done during this year, and as what I understood, is the 820,000 is going to be going towards engineering, I just want to make sure that the land acquisition can go first with the 820,000. And just to make sure that we are on track for 2021, for, for the construction, yes.
You bet. We'll, we'll get you an answer on that, so.
Well, my biggest concern too, Mr. City Manager, was the... Well, my biggest concern too, Mr. City Manager, was the other comment that you made, why this might be pushed out longer was that money was taken out from the Stormwater Utility, $500,000 plus to pay for the red carpet. I guess rebuild of the sewer system around there, which was something that just came out of not part of our plan here, and that project's going before Glen Avenue. So that was, that was my overall concern. But Glen Avenue has been in disrepair for quite a while now, and the amount of damage that it's causing to people's vehicles, it's a big deal. And if the council hasn't been hearing from the neighborhoods, businesses, neighborhood associations along that area, which I mean, it's a major thoroughfare, we got to move that one forward. So that would be my comment is to make sure that the land acquisition moves first since that seems to have the longest lead time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any other folks here on this item. If somebody is, and I don't see it, I'd ask for a verbal. And if not, we have a motion in the second. Okay. So this is a motion in the second, Councilmember Jensen and Councilmember Moore. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Artis?
Aye.
Councilmember Ali?
Aye.
Councilmember Seer?
Aye.
Councilmember Grab?
Aye.
Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Montalongo?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Euler?
Aye.
Councilmember Rigenbach?
Aye.
And Councilmember Ruckregel?
Aye.
It passes with one nay and 10 yays.
Okay. So we're one-third of the way, Mr. Manager. I have Councilmember Ruckregel next.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor, I guess before I start, thank you for partnering with the National League of Mayors and pushing for the federal government to be able to help chip in and fill in the gaps here that we as municipality are facing, along with other ones across the country. But thank you for your push on that. I think we've had some good conversation tonight and, you know, last Tuesday, it seemed like we got off track a little bit, but I think that we also had some good conversation then. And I think tonight's probably not a night to make decisions, but in essence, it's a night to really get some data back so that we can start formulating how we look at making a decision. And thank you, City Manager Yuric, for your presentation. And I think the last slide was probably one of the most telling, is we really have four levels. We have our capital projects, we've got our bonding refinancing, the finance piece of this, we've got some operational changes, you know, which, which might be internal, they may also be external, some maybe expectations of that. And then we've got the revenue piece, which at least from my ears, I'm probably not hearing that there's a, a really big push to do revenue increase, which is an increase in taxes. But I think, you know, we keep, we talk about each one of these sectors, and I think that they're more intricately related because there are some capital projects which tie back to operations. And we've got to have certain people in the operations side to be able to do those capital projects. We've got some monies that might be at stake, that might be jeopardized if we don't do those projects. And, you know, I think when you look at our capital list, we don't have a lot of extra projects on there that probably don't have a significant reason why they've made the list. We, we have really slimmed those down over the years. And, and I think, you know, Councilmember Montalongo brings up a good point about Glen Avenue. And, you know, as we are going to be addressing our business recovery plan, that also might come into effect where we spend some capital dollars because some of our business corridors that also service our citizens might be part of that business recovery plan as well. And, and so for me, I would rather see us to have a, a couple of scenarios, a couple of plans come forward so that we can actually look at it and sort of get a, not that any of the plans would be the, the end result, but it would give us a better understanding of the relationship among the categories and what our tolerance levels would be. Because as we would give a little bit in one area, we could gain in another. And I think that at the end of the day, we're probably, if we're going to have to make the changes that we, that we may have to make, it, it might be a combination of all three. It, it also allows, we, we heard the governor today in his press conference, talk a little bit about what his expectations are over the next couple of weeks for the stay-at-home order, how that might change. And a week of information is going to be very helpful in kind of knowing how we get back to this sort of work back to normal, if there is such a thing also. And that will help give us some time where we can really digest the situation in front of us. I know we're looking at a 51, let's say a $50 million scenario at this point. And to me, it would seem the best thing that we can have for us to have in front of us is a couple of scenarios, you know, and maybe one of those would be, you know, the capital projects we've got listed at 26, maybe we slide that to 23 to, to a 28. Maybe we look at what a five and a 10 and a 15 million dollar operations sort of reconfiguration looks like and, in whatever manner you can do that, you know, maybe that's just even with our contracts externally that we have, or whatever you can come up with, I'm sure, there's a lot of ideas I'm sure that you can put there. And then let's look at the rest as bonding and refinancing. And if we can't, and if we find that that's not possible, then we can look at where some of the other areas in, come in, and we might find in the, in the lead time up that we might be overestimating that a little bit, the, the amount of, that we have to do. But let's set a parameter of $50 million. And I think if we would have, you know, two or three of those scenarios come back, it would be helpful. And, and one of the other scenarios that I think that we've talked about Tuesday night, and I hear from Councilman Grab, and I think it's fair to also put in here, is what does it look like if we would, if we would borrow those $50 million? You know, that could be maybe a fourth scenario. That would give us the information to be able to then talk about what the effects of all of these scenarios really would be. And I think it would be helpful to be, to move this conversation. I, I know it's a lot of work on your part, but I know that you've already done a lot of work in trying to put some numbers together. And if I need to make that in the form of a motion, I can, I'd be happy to do that. So I guess let me go ahead and put that on a motion tonight, that I'd like for you to come back with three scenarios with a range of options, considering 23 to 28 in capital, what five to 15 in various forms look like in operations and the rest in bonding and finance piece, and a fourth option of all borrowing or all financing, so that we can review those and be able to use those as a starting point to have larger conversation.
Councilman, I think that's what the intention of the manager identifying those three areas is doing. He's not going to bring us back one specific in each one of those areas, he's going to bring us back options within each one, which sounds like the same thing that you're asking here.
Well, but I'm, I'm putting some numbers to him so that we have, so that he's able to mirror some of those pieces for us. But so that, that gives him the ability to build us three plans with some ranges of options there.
Four, four plans.
Four, four, yes, four.
Right.
So just because that's a kind of a hanging left on where we started off that we were going to go tonight, is this motion in place of what the original intention was to give him direction in the three areas that he asked for?
I, I would say that this motion would be direction to be able to come back so that we can then, again, we may find that none of these scenarios is the, is where we end. I think if we look at our budget process, the, the budget that we normally get is not anywhere close to where we end up. But I think that by looking at each category separately, we're not seeing the inner relationship between the categories, and so we're getting hung up on an exact number on each one, and I don't think we moved this ball forward. I'd, I'd rather the city manager come back to us with a couple of options so we can see, almost as a slide rule would be, what this would look like, including that fourth option, so that we, we would see the ramifications of the decisions that we could, we would be making.
Okay. I'm going to, there's, there's a few people that want to comment, I'm going to ask the, I'm going to ask the manager first. For me at least, this looks like the, the first dive into the rabbit hole that we were in last week. We kind of started off as the manager asking us for scenarios, for feedback in these areas, not just one, not one, not one response in each area, but he's going to come back with, with several, which, which sounds like the same thing that you're doing, is saying, you know, give us a couple of different scenarios. So I, I, Mr. Manager, why don't you just respond to this because I'm afraid that I went to this movie last week and it was a terrible ending.
Well, I think that, that if we were with, if I understood it correctly, it would be looking at what would be the impact of $5 million of operating reductions, $10 million of operating reductions, $15 million of operating reductions, coupled with a capital budget that would go along with that. And then whatever the gap was, would be left, would be some sort of borrowing to fill that gap. Or there would be zero operating cuts, and we would look at, at the capital side and then some debt financing. Councilman, is that kind of what you're looking at with that?
Correct. So that we can see the inner relationship of if we would cut or be able to add a couple of dollars in the one area, what it does to the other. And you might come back and say that we aren't able to do, you know, hopefully we'll find that there would be some avenues on the banking and finance piece. You might find that that's too large of a chunk, and we've got to be able to add in other areas. I, I think by taking each one in a silo, it, it's very hard to see the relationship between the two, and I think that there is a living relationship among the categories.
I mean, I think we could, Mr. Mayor, I think we could, we could certainly take a swing at, at putting together four scenarios for you that would do just that. I mean, that's something I think that we could, we could certainly put together that would at least try and move the, the ball down the field, so to speak.
So is that, is that a preferred direction as opposed to what you originally laid out an hour ago?
Well, I think that, that as we look at this, it would allow for getting that guidance in terms of, of saying in a large sense, we're going to look at four different levels of reductions in operate, in the operating budget. That's been the area that I think I've heard pretty loud and clear from the council that it's the, the area of last resort, but, but there's also, I think, some concern and tolerance over, over how much borrowing we can really sustain in this period. So this allows us to put those four together, and then we can, we can bring that back to you in a week and say, here's, here's some options for you to consider, and here's what it would potentially look like.
Sounds like six of one and half of the other, but we'll get some more comments to go here, so. Councilman Grab was next. There is a motion, there is a motion on the floor, by the way.
Yes, and that being the Ruckregel, Ruckregel motion, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, as long as it doesn't cause the manager any heartburn, I would second that motion because I think it's roughly consistent with what the manager has been suggesting he would do for us. Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me. And Manager Yuric, I know we have some very public-spirited folks, titans of banking in our community who are willing to step to the plate to help us because if Yuric goes into a depression because of the COVID-19, their institutions will be very definitely impacted as well. And I know you're working through Spear and through other entities, coming up with some kind of a package that would be consistent with this motion, that would help us assess since we have a lot of moving parts here. Can you give us any initial feedback on your attempts to get a package together that we can look at and consider?
Thanks, Councilman. Yeah, I think that, that really, if we're kind of moving, you know, at, in real time here, we are, we are going to be meeting Thursday with the financial advisors to talk about debt restructuring and what that might look like. We have the RFP, we've issued the RFP for a line of credit to a number of different banks, local and, and Midwestern banks, so that we can gather some information. I know the finance director was following up that with some large banks that had some questions about what we were really looking to try and achieve there. And then we're, we're also going to look at and have a discussion with them about what a working capital bond might look like as another financial vehicle for us to get through this period of time, knowing that really what we're talking about, right, is, is we don't know yet, how much revenue are we going to lose and for how long? So we're, we're trying to look at, work through that on, on all fronts right now to see what we can come up with for you.
Right, and I just, I don't want to veer off the motion, but as you know, we do not have a stimulus package yet. That would be directed at the states and then in turn the municipalities. Do you believe that within a reasonable period of time, the next meeting, especially if we stay on a bi-weekly or weekly status, we might have some idea if we're going to have a $150 billion appropriation there from Congress to be signed by President Trump to help the states and municipalities? Because there are a lot of moving levers, and I think Councilman Ruckregel's motion acknowledges and contemplates that there are a lot of moving parts here.
Well, absolutely. And I think to answer the direct question, it, it took them 12 days to negotiate this fourth stimulus package. We may not have an answer in a week, but with the, there was significant outpouring from communities across the country. You're starting to see more and more press articles about it. I would think that we're going to continue to hear from communities of our size, smaller and even larger, that are, that are below the, the thresholds of direct support from the federal government, that will be continuing to talk about the impact that, that the economic downturn is going to have on our economy, let alone the impact that the pandemic is having on our communities.
Thank you, Manager and Mayor.
Councilman Kelly, did you have a comment?
No, Mr. Mayor, I, I was seconding his motion.
Okay. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess first and foremost, I, I will not support this motion. I think, as I indicated in my initial comments, I think we need to look at cutting or reducing, deferring our capital improvement projects first, and then look into borrowing, whether it's refinancing, restructuring debt, and looking at some of the other options with regards to borrowing. And we should look into reducing or cutting operating expenses. Laying off people and cutting jobs has to be the last, absolute last resort. So I will not support this motion. Although everything is interconnected and there is an interrelationship, I just can't support directing the manager to cut jobs until we directing the manager to, um, cut jobs until we look at everything else.
Okay, I have Councilmember Ali next.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Artis. Actually, I think this sounds like a, a comprehensive approach in looking at all the different buckets, all the different areas at one time, uh, rather than looking at the situation in a vacuum. I think they are related, um, and I, I think that, um, we should, uh, definitely have various scenarios and some of them are not going to be appealing at all. Some of them, I mean, I think about revenue increase in terms of tax increases and, you know, that's an area that I would not be supportive of, but that doesn't mean it's a scenario that is not going to be presented. It, it's, you know, one of those choices that perhaps we don't make. But I, I think that at this point, with this public health crisis, that we're looking at everything, we have to look, we have to see the pictures. We have to see what the options are, what those scenarios are. So I'm, I'm very interested in looking at, uh, what you put together, uh, Mr. Manager, in terms of restructuring to lower our debt service, um, borrowing, um, also looking at our cash reserves that are currently at 48 million, that could come down somewhat to, uh, help to relieve, relieve some of this debt pressure. I'm really optimistic, uh, Councilman Grab, about a stimulus package coming for cities our size. So I, you know, that whole finance area, uh, is connected with our, our capital area, which is connected to our operations side. It takes people to get the work done. Uh, so everything's interrelated and I think I like this approach in terms of not looking at the buckets in a vacuum. This bucket, then that bucket. I think we need a plan and that's what I'm, I'm hearing is let's, let's see a plan that has various scenarios and then we can kind of pick and choose what works in terms of pulling together a plan, uh, for, for Peoria. So I support this. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Just, folks, just for clarification, regardless of it, if it's this motion or the original way this was set out, we're asking for the same thing. We're not asking for specifics. We're asking for general, uh, levers for the manager to provide us in each one of those areas. And then we will decide how those pieces work together. They're, obviously they're all interrelated, they're all part of the budget. That's not rocket science. So I, you know, I, I, I think getting, getting caught up and, uh, I, you know, so I guess the, you know, one of the questions would be, we already passed a, a recommend, a recommendation on the capital side. So does this supersede that? Because now we're, now we're asking for a whole different scenario on the capital side. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm saying this 70 minutes into the meeting because I warned us about the going down the rabbit hole that we're two feet into right now. So just if we can stay focused on, on the topic at hand, it, it will give the manager the direction he needs. And then when he comes back with, with whatever that direction that we give him, that is when we start to pick and choose and slice and dice and see how they, they work together. So I, I think some people are getting confused that we're talking about two, two different ways to look at this when we're, we're basically asking the city manager for similar information, uh, stated a different way. I have, uh, Councilmember Montalongo next.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with some of the comments you just made here. And I'm, I'm taking the motion from, uh, Councilman Ruck Regal. I, I'm assuming this is not necessarily an order he wants to see these in, um, but just, um, bullet points to, these subjects, um, because I, I kind of agree with Councilwoman Jensen as I think eliminating jobs, the cutting jobs should be the last, uh, the last thing that we should be looking at. So, um, but I do support, uh, having some tolerance in there and the, giving the city managers some leeway here to, to help us, uh, with that.
Okay.
Um, I have just one other piece here. I know we're talking about reductions, but I think somewhere in here, it would be helpful if we had, um, a, a plan for, uh, some public advertisements, announcements on, um, on when we start to come out of this and getting our businesses up and running. And how we are following state and federal guidelines here in Peoria. It's a safe place to come in, um, to visit our retail restaurants and we're, we're following all the guidelines to have a safe community. Whatever that message ends up being, um, we need money to put those advertisements out. I'm not sure where in this budget this should go because I don't think we have that already budgeted. But I want to make sure that we have somewhere, uh, when we come back to do a budget for this. Thank you.
Okay. I have Councilmember Moore next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the direction I would have as it relates to, I think we're on item two, borrowing, uh, and it's going to touch into item three, is simply, uh, to Councilman, Councilman's, uh, Ruck Regal's, um, suggestion, let's look at no reductions as one of those options. I think he provided you with three different options. So let's look at no reductions in staffing and pull all that into borrowing to see if, um, uh, as a, as another option for us to look at. That would help with some of the other members who have indicated, uh, a less than desirable, uh, want to, uh, look at staff reduction a, as would I. Uh, so let's look at that as an option as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I, Councilmember Kelly next.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, uh, obviously I agree with, uh, Councilman Ruck Regal's motion. That's what I thought we were going to do last week and this week as well. I would, uh, I would like the manager also to give us information next week on, um, you know, what is a 10% layoff? What does that look like? What does a 20% layoff look like? For this, how many months, et cetera, et cetera. I think we need to look at all of the, um, items on the list. Uh, Mr. Manager, you're going to be talking to borrowing and stuff and you'll let us know about that, uh, by this time next week. And I'm not going to suggest a three-digit significant number, uh, estimate on this. I'm just going to say that everything should be in play. And, uh, we need to see some different scenarios of what the effects are. And, uh, so I'll be, I'll be supporting this motion, as I did not support the last one, which was very specific, as Councilwoman Jensen clarified just a, a moment ago. I, I'd like to see some scenarios. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman, uh, Regenbach is next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I think that I, I, I'm just having a real hard time figuring out the difference between what the manager asked for and what Councilman Ruck Regal is proposing because I really see them as, as, as the same thing. We need to set some parameters. And I appreciate the motion and I think Councilwoman Ali was right when she says these things are so interrelated. To look at them in a vacuum is really disingenuous and, and, and won't get us anywhere. So with a little bit of a smirk on my face, let's pass the motion and then we, then we can be done for the night because we'll have accomplished what the manager asked for. But in seriousness, Mr. Manager, let me just get a little clarification from you, if I may. When, when you set up these four squares here, um, as the things that you were going to ask for some clarification or some direction on, um, you, you were planning to bring us multiple scenarios under each of those, weren't you? Or were you going to just come up with a solution for each of the four areas?
No, I, I, I think that, that coming up with multiple scenarios allows you to look at, at the interconnectedness of everything. So I think that's something that we can certainly do.
So in, in a roundabout way, this, this was exactly the kind of direction you were looking for?
Sure, correct.
So again, I don't want to get in that rabbit hole and argue about the specifics of the dollar amounts that Councilman Ruck Regal brought up. But I, I would see his motion just putting a little more clarity on what the manager asked for to begin with. So, um, I'm, I'm definitely inclined to support it. Thank you very much.
I have Councilmember Jensen next.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I guess, of, of course, we're, I don't think we're looking at this in a vacuum. We never have. They're all related. I just, um, and I don't want to go down a rabbit hole. I just don't think the motion, first of all, um, as I indicated, doesn't include, um, coming back with the scenario without any, um, reductions of staff. And I would like, I, to have more specifics on exploring the borrowing, um, scenarios. So, you know, I'd like to make a substitute motion that the city manager be given and use all the techniques that he's discussed in his, um, report back to us and in his presentation today, um, to manage our cash and our debts and to come back with, you know, two or three or four different scenarios and proposals, um, that will keep us afloat, um, at least through this next year and the following year.
I have a substitute motion on the floor. Uh, is there a second for that motion? I'm not seeing a substitute on the chat bar. Uh, if someone would like to second it verbally. Otherwise, uh, the motion will go for, I'm not seeing that. Okay. Anything else, Councilman Jensen?
No.
Okay. Uh, I have no further discussion. We have a motion and a second on the floor. What I would like to do is ask, uh, our clerk if she would, uh, restate, uh, the motion just to make sure everyone understands, uh, understands what's on the floor. Madam Clerk.
Uh, this is an advisory motion to the city manager, uh, to look at what the impact of five million to 10 million to 15 million, uh, in operations reductions and 23 million to 28 million in capital reductions and the rest being, um, filled in with borrowing and refinancing. And that was seconded by Councilmember Grab.
Okay. Uh, and what was the number on the capital?
23 million to 28 million.
Okay. So I'm going to, uh, support the motion because that, uh, that range would, would still not make us have to go back and try to figure out what to do with the first motion that we passed tonight. I'll just leave it at that.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. If I, if I could, I think there was a fourth scenario, which was, uh, with no operating cuts and looking at all borrowing, um, within that same range of the capital reductions.
Okay. Which, uh, realistically, that would always be part of the discussion. If we didn't want to do any, we wouldn't do any.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, I have Councilmember Kelly with a comment.
Um, I just want to make sure on the motion, maybe ask, uh, Councilman Ruck Regal, I think the main part of your motion was multiple scenarios. Am I correct? Uh, Mr. Ruck Regal?
Yes, thi- this gives him an ability on range to be able to bring a couple of scenarios back to us.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. I'm seeing no, uh, Councilman Grab.
Uh, Manager Yurik, where are we on layoff notices?
So the, the layoff notices were issued last week. That just simply is, provides the 30-day notice. Um, we're in the process of scheduling meetings with the bargaining units, but we have not met, uh, to have any conversations with any of the units yet.
And, uh, that will be stayed until we get more direction from the council?
Well, the, the, the layoff notices provide, uh, the notice that, that within 30 days, the city may institute layoffs. That though ultimately, um, we can work that with you so that that's a council decision about when that would be. Uh, that just simply put the, the unions on notice at that point in time.
And, and you use the subjunctive mood, which, which, uh, you know, is involved whenever the word "may" is used. Am I understanding that correctly? It's not, uh, that we are going to do that. We may, correct?
Absol- absolutely. It's "may". It, it does not mean that we, that we would be doing that for sure.
Thank you.
Okay. On the, uh, on the motion, um, seeing no further discussion. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
I, I have a question.
Okay, I'm not, okay. You just popped up at the same time I called the question, so we haven't done it yet. Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mr., uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have just a quick question for the city manager. And more of a comment question, I guess. How are we going to recognize when we borrow or restructure our debt? Accounting wise? Is that maybe a question for Scroggins?
Director Scroggins, you want to explain how we'll, we'll recognize the, from an accounting perspective, our borrowing?
Sure. If we, we go down the road of a short-term borrowing, like a line of credit, it will be recorded as a short-term debt on our financial statements. If we go down the road of a working capital bond, it would be recorded just like any other bond. It would be part of our long-term debt, would increase our general obligation bond, bonds outstanding and we would make annual debt service payments on that. Goes with the restructuring of that, that would be reissuing current debt, just like we do typically with refunding. But this time, refunding and restructuring would be not for savings, but to smooth the debt payments out and to lengthen the debt service.
And we'll be using that, obviously that borrowing for cash to be spent in, in this year.
Well, if we restructure that, it wouldn't be cash coming to us. It would be a reduction in debt service being need, needed to be made. So it would be a, an avoidance of cash outgo. If we did the working cash bond, yes, the cash would be in our hands prior to the end of the year or whenever we issued the bond.
So my, I, I guess the overall point I guess I'm trying to make is because of the revenue shortfall that we already have and it's not just a small revenue variance that we have, but we have a major revenue, um, shortage. We are in fact changing our budget overall, which, you know, from my opinion, this is a, uh, change in our budget, which is going to require a two-thirds vote, Mr. City Manager. Just want us to have that research before we have our, our final vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Grab, did you have another comment? Councilman Grab, did you have another comment?
Yes, Mayor Artis, and I'm anxious to have a vote on this, but I think we would be remiss if we did not bring in another element. Another moving part. And Manager, you and I have had this discussion on that's as it relates to green modeling, infrastructure, EPA settlement, taking some pressure off our capital budgets as we do a settlement. Do we think we're going to have it this year? I think that has to be factored into the equation. I know it's mind-boggling because we're juggling all these things right now, but I do think it would have a huge impact on our city if we do indeed, or if we are compelled to settle that this year.
So so as of right now, our discussions with the EPA, we've we've basically put the the conclusion of our negotiations on hold as we just wait to see what the, if if there's any dust that settles here in the near term on where the economy is going, when the the people start back to work, so that we know the fiscal impact that this may have on our community. So that's one of the things that we've we've just simply asked, that we just wait and see what the what the economic ramifications of this pandemic are before we move into signing a consent decree.
Manager, and again, I I think corollary of my inquiry is we should not necessarily assume that a settlement would necessarily cause a problem for our people if it were to alleviate some of the pressure that we currently have on fixing our infrastructure. Is there not perhaps a silver lining to this?
I think what I'd like to do is is dig into that a little bit and then provide you with a report back so that I have an opportunity to talk with Public Works about what they're looking at from a an investment in infrastructure and and where that would occur and and what kind of cost we'd be looking at. And how much does it does it offset some of the the future needs that we have?
That's right. And and we do have a potential change in national administration, and that would have a big impact on this whole green modeling thing. So I hesitated to throw that in because it's been complex enough. So I guess, Mayor, at this point, I will be quiet and hopefully we can get a motion passed.
Thank you, Council. Councilman, I I don't think it's too something that I can't say, but just in regards to that, I did ask our Washington DC council today if if she would request the EPA to dismiss this action against the city in the form of federal stimulus to the city of Peoria. I don't expect that to get any any huge response, but since we didn't get anything from Washington DC, I didn't think it hurt to ask.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Okay. I'm seeing no additional chat requests to comment. Again, we have a motion by Councilman Ruckregel, seconded by Councilman Grab. Last call. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Artis?
Aye.
Councilmember Ali?
Aye.
Councilmember Seer?
Aye.
Councilmember Grab?
Aye.
Councilmember Jensen?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Montalongo?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Euler?
Aye.
Councilmember Rigenbach?
Aye.
And Councilmember Ruckregel?
Aye.
It passes 10 to 1 with Councilmember Jensen voting no.
Mr. Manager, I think that that motion accomplished the the main areas that you wanted feedback on. Would you agree with that?
I would agree, sir.
So are there any other additional items that the council would either like clarification on or would like the manager to to also bring back to our meeting next week? Madam Clerk? Hold on. Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, I have a few questions. I know I sent you some early today, but I have a couple of follow-up questions on a few of the items we were talking about. One is with regards to the HRA revenue and how we've postponed or suspended the funding to the Civic Center, the Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, Arts Partners, and I think the Riverfront Marketing. My question is at at the point, hopefully, when we start bringing in that revenue again and we have a surplus and we can start using that surplus to for our contributions to those agencies. Is it set up the way I think you had in your memo that it will first go to the Tourism Reserve Fund, then it will go to the Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, then to Riverfront Marketing, then to Arts Partners, in that order?
Yes, that's the that's the intergovernmental agreement. That's the order of payment pursuant to the agreement we have with the Peoria Civic Center. So that would be the way that the payments would be made.
Okay. But and then your reference to that agreement, we only have an agreement with the Civic Center. The agreements that we have with those other organizations did not clarify you have a surplus of funding, did they?
I don't believe that the other and the the other organizations have been told in the past that it's subject to the to the HRA tax funding. I'll certainly go back and look at at what we've told them in the past or what our agreements say with them. But I, you know, the the CVB is well aware that that probably through the rest of this year, there's not going to be funds available for them. And we're happy to communicate that to all the groups.
Well, and I've I've communicated that with Arts Partners, but I just wanted to make sure, I guess, then can you keep the council in the loop and those organizations once we start getting that revenue in again?
Absolutely.
Because it's it'll be different than for each organization when they will start getting money, because I I assume we won't get the full surplus that funds them all at once. It'll be gradual.
Correct.
Great. Thank you. I've got a couple others, the info you sent last night. Hey, man, I'm sorry. So I think, let's see, that might be all I have you. One of my questions you answered to Dr. Ali earlier today. I don't know, I you kind of touched upon this, and I don't know if you or or possibly the mayor has any indication in your your discussions and the calls you've been listening in on with the National Council of Cities about the chances or the likelihood of another stimulus bill coming and that we will be getting funding or your talks with the congressional leaders?
I will say that my guess is as good as anybody's. I I know that there is a certain amount of of support to come back to the cities because there's a lot more cities, clearly, under 500,000 that are getting kicked to the curb throughout this whole process.
Right.
I know that, you know, I know that Congress is hearing about it, but I I would, I I don't even want, I, my my hope is that it will. But I, my guess is as good as anybody's right now. I I can't, I can't, I don't really have a good guess on on where Washington's going to be when this one gets done.
Okay.
We should have a better idea by the time we get closer to work, doing some work on this budget if it looks, if if they're sending signals that they are going to take care of us. Mr. Manager?
I I would agree. I mean, I think that that's a, you know, if we knew that there was a line of sight on some funding, that would have a a material impact on all the options and scenarios that we would be putting together for you.
Okay, and I I guess along those those lines, with regards to the money that's already been sent to the state, which is supposed to be dispersed, possibly the local government? Do you, are you receiving any indication if Peoria will get any or if it'll be, there'll be a formula put together?
We we are not getting any guidance from from the governor's office or from the state of Illinois on on how they may release coronavirus relief relief funds that were allocated as part of the CARES Act to municipalities that are under the 500,000 population threshold. So there's there's been no guidance whatsoever. We've been talking to our local legislative delegation about it. They are certainly going to bat for us, but there's been no direction that has come out from the governor's office yet.
Okay. And then I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. For expenses that do qualify for FEMA reimbursement related to COVID-19, the city will be reimbursed at 75% of those costs, correct?
That is correct. If, the way FEMA works, they want us to to try and tap any other available funding that we may have first before we tap FEMA funding, and then FEMA will reimburse at a 75% reimbursement rate.
Okay. One other question I have, I think it's question 16 in your first set of report backs related to the other organizations in addition to the Civic Center, Arts Partners, and the Convention and Visitors Bureau. You listed other organizations and entities that we contribute money to, including Springdale, animal control. I I'm wondering if there is any room to reduce some of those as well. I mean, I realize we can't, we're obligated to contribute to the animal control budget. If you could look at those further and bring back a recommendation, and I also, I don't, what is focal point?
Well, that that's the broadcasting of the city council meetings.
Okay.
So I think that that we can certainly provide that in a in a report back. The Springdale Cemetery is an intergovernmental agreement, very similar to the intergovernmental agreement we have with the the county over animal control services. I'm not sure there's much that we can do on either of those fronts, but there may be some of the other dollar amounts that we have that are there and support to other agencies. We can, we can report back on that and what we can do to trim that back.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, we're at 20-092, and that is a communication from the mayor and corporation council with a request to approve the declaration of local state and of emergency.
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Rigenbach. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Euler. Is there discussion on this item? Discussion? Councilman Grab?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Manager Eric, Corporation Council. It's pretty much clear that the governors are going to have the final say on when there will be some loosening of some of the rules concerning which businesses may open and when we may change our distancing guidelines. There has been a lot of discussion about whether, and I don't think it's an informed discussion, on whether mayors and some parts of the state can do something different than what the governor authorizes. It's my understanding they may not. Do you concur with that, Corporation Council?
I do, Councilman. As to essential businesses, Governor's Executive Order Number 10 was very specific as to what businesses were deemed essential and what businesses were deemed non-essential. The guidance has changed almost daily since then. But all of that guidance is coming directly from the governor's office or from the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity under his direction. I do not believe that our mayor has the authority to issue an opinion that would be contrary to anything that is listed in that executive order.
And they also have ramifications for any money we would get back as a replace to COVID. I appreciate that response. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. I'm seeing no other requests for discussion on this item. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Artis?
Aye.
Councilmember Ali?
Aye.
Councilmember Seer?
Aye.
Councilmember Grab?
Aye.
Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Montalongo?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Euler?
Aye.
Councilmember Rigenbach?
Aye.
And Councilmember Ruckregel?
Aye.
Passes unanimously?
Maybe before we go to the next item, Madam Clerk, just for a little, just a short follow-up on Councilman Grab's comments there. And and Corporation Council is, as they have been consistent throughout this, that there never has been consideration that mayors have the ability to supersede executive orders by the governor. And I'm saying this more for businesses that are in the listening audience this evening that would say, well, how come I have a store in East Peoria that allows it and we can't do it in Peoria? This is strictly, it it's strictly an enforcement issue that the the governor's direction, executive order, is not being followed in some communities, and it is in others. So it's it clearly is not something that we have leeway on. And the governor wrote the executive order and expects the local folks to to actually enforce that. And so that's the only thing that we have an ability to do is enforce the governor's order. And I am pretty sure that's what Councilman Grab was also getting at, but just so people know, it's not a situation where Peoria is being any more restricted than we have to be. It's a matter of some communities enforcing it and some communities aren't. Madam Clerk?
We're at a first reading, 20-093. It's a request to receive and file a first reading review of an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the Code of the City of Peoria relating to the definition of weeds.
We have Director Black or someone from?
I'm I'm here. Thank you, Mayor. This is the first reading for a change in ordinance amendments, Chapter 14. Specifically, what it would do is increase the violation height for weeds and grass from the current 10 inches to 15 inches. There are two specific reasons for this request. Both of them are related to the current COVID-19 situation. First is that typically every summer, the Community Development Department hires four temporary full-time code enforcement aides from April through August or September to help cover the increase in environmental issues during the summer. Right now, those positions are being held open, and they would be eliminated as part of first cut in the operating budget to the Community Development Department. Second part is for our annual work order budget as part of the anticipated first cut or proposed first cut in the operating budget to the Community Development Department. We would remove $100,000 from the work order budget. We would remove $100,000 from the work order budget. So that equates to approximately 1,000 fewer work orders on an annual basis. And as you know, a work order is when a private property owner doesn't cut their own grass, pick up garbage, litter, whatever it might be. And we need to have a contractor go out and do that work for us. So taking these two things together with fewer staff in the field and fewer dollars available, we need to stretch out the remaining dollars for the rest of the year. Because we certainly don't want to get to a situation where in August or September, we are out of work order money and the grass is still growing. And of course, the work order budget also covers items, as I said, like picking up garbage, litter, car parts, tires, televisions, and other power products. So the entire goal here is just to stretch that limited budget out through the end of this calendar year. In order to try and mitigate any negative impact, we're going to make some changes to the way that we do work this year. First, we're going to send out a letter or a postcard to all property owners that received violation notice last year for all weeds, grass, reminding them of their responsibility to maintain their own property. And secondly, strongly encouraging them to sign up for the free automated notification system so that if there is a warning at their property, they would receive notification before we have to send a contractor out to make that cut. Secondly, we will do weekly media releases of different kinds, again, to remind and encourage property owners to maintain their own property. We'll institute an early warning system, is what we're calling it at this point. But effectively, when a field staff person sees grass or weeds at approximately 10 inches, we will issue a warning to that property owner. It's simply a warning because the violation height would be 15 inches. But at 10 inches, we're going to tell the property owner, you are heading towards a violation height here. If it gets to 15 inches, we will issue a work order. Contractor will cut the grass and we'll send you a bill for it. So that early warning is not something that we have typically done, but I think that will help reduce the number of actual work orders the city has to issue. And beyond that, we'll continue to monitor this as we go forward this summer. If there is a need to make a modification to it, then we will certainly make that modification. But the goal is to try and smooth out the environmental load work for the rest of the year so that we can get through the end of December with a limited budget, limited staff, that we anticipate. Thank you.
Thank you. I had Denise, Councilwoman, Woman Moore up first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Black, thank you for the communication we have in your drafting this item. I do have, as this is the first reading, I just want to make sure that we look at some additional items in here. The first item would be, I didn't see in reading this communication where this changing of the height was from 10 inches to 15 inches just for this growing season. Left as it is, it could come into next year and without having to come back and have it come before council again, is it possible to add a sunset provision onto this communication?
I believe so. I would defer to Corporation Counsel on that question. I'd be happy to work with.
It's first reading. We can make those adjustments.
Okay. The reason I would want to make that adjustment is, as you know, I deferred the item that we're going to come to next because this 15 inches in my district is problematic. It was problematic when I deferred it, and it's still going to be problematic. But as we will talk about the next item soon, we're going to go ahead and agree to it. So that was the first item. The next thing is in the, let's see, the fourth paragraph under background, the last sentence indicates that there is a significant delay in any cost recovery. Does those, sometimes it's only a one-shot deal. Maybe there was only a person who forgot and we sent them a bill and it's late and they get paid later on. Are there any circumstances where this significant delay in recovery has run into the thousands of dollars or are we talking about small dollars here?
I would have to, we'd have to provide you with a report back. We'd have to bring that back when this item comes to council action. I don't have that data.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking that is if this number is significant, then my next question would be, what additional steps are we going to take to try to either gain compliance or get refunded or recover those costs? So thank you for bringing that back. The next item, you indicated that what we're going to be doing is providing the warnings when the grass is around 10 inches. In our conversation, you had indicated as long as there was funding, we would continue to provide the warning. And my caution was, once you start providing warnings, at some point, if that has to be pulled back and folks didn't see the notice where, oh, we're stopping the warnings, it may cause some ill feelings out in our community. And so I would hope that we would be able to continue these warnings throughout the growing season and not pull them back as to get people more concerned than they would need to be. Is that something that we could fairly, are fairly certain that this is going to continue the whole growing season? And if not, what are you prepared to do as far as communication to make sure that everyone is aware that that warning has now been rescinded?
Sure. So the issue is not so much the cost of the warning as it is the staff availability. Typically, as you know, what happens during the summer is in the late spring, early summer, we get a real push of grass and weeds because that's when everything's growing. And so with a limited number of staff out there, they have to respond to complaints that are coming in. And as they're running from complaint to complaint, the amount of time in between for them to stop, identify a property that is, that has grass at 8, 9, 10, 11 inches, and then issue the warning delays them getting to the next complaint. And so, and we always try to get to the complaints as quickly as possible because there's someone on the other end of the phone who made that specific complaint. So it's not really an issue of dollars as much as people. If we are not able to keep up with the warning system, then we would send out as much information as we could via all of the media channels that we have to let people know that the responsibility is still there. 15 inches, if that's what the council agrees to. And we will continue to encourage them through every channel that we can.
Thank you for that. You actually made my point that we don't have the staff. If at some point, running staff from warning to warning becomes a problem, we'd have to pull them back. And that was why I suggested perhaps we wouldn't do the warning. But we can, we can beat that horse to death at another time after, since this is a first reading. And no, I do not advocate beating animals. Thank you. The last thing I have is, to your point about if, if we have to pull back on those staff members going out and providing the warnings, should there come back, should we come back with any suggestion on any types of layoff or furlough, which I hope we don't, but prior to doing anything like that, if we aren't able to hire these individuals, if we have what may be deemed in some eyes as excess staff because of budgetary reasons, I don't see why we couldn't move them into doing some of this work. No, it wouldn't necessarily cut the budget, but it would keep those people working. And we need the service that your department provides because here in the first district, it is, it is central to keeping the first district moving in the right direction. So I would just offer that as a suggestion. If there's any way to, if we don't, if we can't hire these staff members and move other people into those roles, I would like to recommend we try to do that. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. I had Councilmember Grab next.
I know Councilmember Moore has done a lot of work on this, and I applaud the work she's done. But consistent with what I indicated last time, I'm not going to support the city of Peoria becoming a savanna. And I think that we're making this terribly complex. 10 inches is, should be our rule. It's been our rule. And Director Black, I do not believe you have been instructed to cut your staff yet. Therefore, this is highly premature. I will not support it.
Okay. And Councilmember Kelly next. He just withdrew his comments. Sorry, Councilman, I just saw that. Councilman Ruckregel?
I withdraw mine. Councilmember Moore hit my questions.
Okay, thank you. I have Councilmember Seer next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question for our city manager. In a state of emergency, do you have the emergence, what are your emergency power do you have, basically? I mean, I'm in an agreement with Councilman Grab here. I think this is, we're wasting a lot of time here. I mean, do you have the power to use a good judgment and make changes instead of coming out for us to come out with you ordinance? Do you have that power, sir?
Well, I think we could certainly suspend certain practices during the state of emergency. The larger question is, is could we do it for the entire year? I would turn to the corp counsel and ask, ask our Corporation Counsel if that, if that is something that could hold for the remainder of this year so we wouldn't have to change the ordinance.
Yeah. Unlike Mr. Grab here, I won't be supporting this ordinance. I would prefer that you use your emergency power and use discretion.
Corporation Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Section 7-35.2 of the city code, the city manager's emergency power does allow him to suspend or alter the enforcement of any ordinance for the duration of an emergency.
Thank you.
Do I sit on the floor, Mr. Mayor?
You do.
Okay. Thank you very much, and that answers my question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome. We don't have a motion on the floor with that, with that last bit of discussion and the feedback from Corporation Counsel. Is this something that we want to just remove from consideration? Or we could do a receive and file and not act on it? There's a lot of different ways to dispose of this.
Mr. Mayor, I think that the problem lies in that if we were to, if I were to suspend the ordinance for the duration of the emergency, if the emergency duration is lifted in June, then we would go back to the 10-inch threshold. In some of our actions that we've taken, we don't have the funding to continue to mow at that level. You know, we could bring those back at that point in time for council to then act on them later. Or we could just proceed forward with the ordinance change for just this year, which would correspond with some of the actions council took at the last meeting.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Moore to receive and file. So that would, it would bring it back for some type of action at our next meeting if there's a second for the motion. There's a second. Seconded by Councilman Kelly. Discussion on the motion. This is just a receive and file. We'll bring it back for action next week. Councilman Regenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would ask that as part of the, when it comes back, we look at that, putting a timeline on that, making it just for this calendar year. So just throw that in, Director Black, if you would, as one of the options.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? I'm seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Mayor Artis?
Aye.
Councilmember Ali?
Aye.
Councilmember Seer?
Aye.
Councilmember Grab?
No.
Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Montalongo?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Euler?
Aye.
Councilmember Regenbach?
Aye.
Councilmember Ruckregel?
Aye.
Passes with one nay. Councilmember Grab. The next item, we're at unfinished business. 20-086 is a communication from the city manager and director of public works with a request to approve contracts for the 2020 City of Peoria and Peoria County trustee and vacant lot mowing program as outlined, DND Home Care Solutions, JIMAX, P-Town Car Club, Walton Service Incorporated, Carmody Lawn Services, Hulse Lawn Care, Lawn Order, and Hearns Landscaping. And it's for an amount not to exceed $257,492.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you all recall, last week I asked for this item to be pulled because I was concerned with the designation of 15 inches for mowing of lots by the Community Development and Public Works Departments. What I since discovered during the conversation with Director Powers and Director Black, I thank you both gentlemen for being there and helping me work through this thought process on this. As we were looking at perhaps getting a different inch agreement, a statement was made that we were not going to be cutting at all the trustee lots. And that was something, when I went back and read through the communication, that was not clearly stated in there. And, but Director Powers indicated, in fact, that the intent was to raise the level of cutting of those lots that we were going to cut to 15 inches and completely not cut at all the trustee lots. As most of you know, we have what has estimated to be between 718, excuse me, 700 and 800 trustee lots. And if you've seen the diagram that indicates where those trustee lots are, they're predominantly located in districts 1, 2, and 3. And District 1 has the dubious distinction of having close to 700 of those lots. And a lot of that is concentrated on the south side. So imagine, if you will, with me, that not only are we not cutting grass on private property until it's 15 inches, but those trustee lots, which I remind you, there are several hundred of them, were not going to be cut at all. And they would grow in the three feet, four feet, and five feet, and I don't know. I had a concern about that. So during that conversation, it was agreed that Director Powers would go back and look at what it would cost to put those trustee lots back on the list of those lots to be cut. So that is what has been done. If you were able to compare the communication this week with the communication last week, you would see that there's approximately $85,000 more embedded in the communication this week so that we can cut those trustee lots. In order to, to bring those trustee lots in, I agreed that 15 inches would have to be acceptable because four feet and five feet was not acceptable. And so with that, I'd like to move for approval to approve this item that's before us tonight, that the private property lots would receive, would be cut at 15 inches, and that all 700 or 800 trustee lots would also be mowed and mowed at 15 inches. And my understanding is that they're not going to go out there with a ruler and if it's 13 and a half inches, then they're not going to, they'll just come back the next time because the next time it'll probably be 18 or 20 inches. Rather, they will use their discretion and mow at that time. Is that correct, Director Black? Is, is that correct, Director Black?
I, I, excuse me, Councilwoman, I believe so. I would, I would defer to, to Public Works on that as they maintain the trustee lots. But I believe that.
Okay. Director Powers, are you there?
I am. This does contemplate us being in a reactionary mode relative to a mow. So yes, if it was close to 15 inches, we would mow.
Okay. And so what I would ask the community to do is, and I will follow up with this with the community, is to be vigilant on making sure that these trustee lots, no, not trustee lots, but any lot that's out there, does not go beyond the, the height that we are instituting now. So as we can maintain our, the look of our community, I would have to compliment Director Black and his staff with Joe Doolin and those that work for him. They've done a phenomenal job trying to rein in what had been something that should not have been acceptable in any district. And I, I would hate to see all of that work go for naught because we allow the wild kingdom to start growing up in our community. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to leave it there with the move for approval.
Thank you. And I have a second by Councilmember Ali. Anyone additionally like to speak to this item? Councilman Montalongo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question for the city manager. The city manager, is there any way to recuperate any of these costs in the future?
Thank you, Councilman. You, you, as far as recovering the cost from the trustee lots, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
So we've had some initial conversations. We tried to put some information into the, the legislative program to, to see if there's an opportunity for us to recover some of the costs that we incur before properties go to the tax sale. And that's something that we would continue to try and have that dialogue with the county over. Some of it has to do with how they have their, their contract structured with the, the county trustee, who is a, a private attorney that manages this contract for these properties and acts on behalf of all the taxing bodies. So the way the process works, people don't pay their taxes, they end up in the trustee's hands, then eventually they go to auction where somebody will, will acquire these properties. And we would look to try and just simply be made whole if we could for some of those costs, if we could incur it. So it's something we can continue that conversation with them about.
Thank you.
Councilman Grab?
Director Powers, what kind of machine do you have to cut 15-inch tall grass? I wonder if the council members have rulers nearby. Are we talking a scythe? What, what are we talking here?
I would put this in the category of light commercial.
What kind of machine do they use to cut 15-inch high grass?
A light commercial mower.
Okay. And then also, do you contemplate that there will be a cleanup of all the grass that's strewn everywhere, all over the sidewalks and into the streets? Is that part of this?
I'm sorry, Councilman, I mean to interrupt. That is part of the contract, yes.
Oh, boy. This is going to be fun. I'm sorry, council members, you're really going down, talk about a rabbit hole. This, this is not good. And I, 15 inches is wrong, wrong, wrong. So I'm not going to vote for this either. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion on this item? We have a motion in the second. I'm seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Artis?
Aye.
Councilmember Ali?
Aye.
Councilmember Seer? Councilmember Grab?
No.
Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Montalongo?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Euler?
Aye.
Councilmember Riggelbach?
Aye.
And Councilmember Ruckregal? It passes with eight yays and three nays. Councilmember Seer, Councilmember Grab, and Councilmember Ruckregal. Voting no. 20-091 is a request to approve a land purchase agreement between Exposition Gardens and the City of Peoria.
Councilman Montalongo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move for a, a deferral at this time here. We're waiting to get a response back from, an official response back from Expos at this time here. We did have some conversation with them, but I think we're waiting to hear the official response back from them. Yeah. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
That is correct, Councilman.
Councilman, did you want to specify when you wanted to defer that to?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to defer this item to our next meeting, our next regular scheduled meeting, which is next Tuesday.
Okay. This is a deferral until the 28th regular meeting? Is there a second for the motion, Councilman Ruckregal? Discussion on the deferral. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Artis?
Aye.
Councilmember Ali?
Aye.
Councilmember Seer?
Sorority Clerk, aye.
Councilmember Grab?
No.
Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Montalongo?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Euler?
Aye.
Councilmember Riggelbach?
Aye.
And Councilmember Ruckregal?
Aye.
It passes 10 to 1 with Councilmember Grab voting nay. We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council and we have one person who wrote in.
Madam Clerk, just real quick before we go to citizens to address under unfinished business, it was an item that had been discussed previously. And, and Mr. Manager, I'd just like to ask you to, if you could give the council a quick update on the, the discussion that's been, been had in the community recently regarding the need for restroom facilities in our downtown area, especially for the homeless population.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes. In light of, I think, some, some coverage in the media concerning bathrooms for the homeless population at this time where maybe some bathrooms are closed, we had staff doing some investigation of, of some of the areas where we know that unsheltered homeless persons may live or congregate. We also had, working with the Heart of Illinois Continuum of Care, their local outreach, homeless outreach team, did go out yesterday and spent some time identifying and interviewing unsheltered homeless individuals. We started identifying some locations where we could potentially look at putting some restroom facilities up. We did check with the downtown shelters to see if they allowed open access to their restrooms. And all of the shelters do allow access to their restrooms. The Dream Center not only allows restroom access, but they have showers and meals on a drop-in basis as well. We did contact City Link about the Transit Center because that was one location where the Transit Center's bathrooms were closed. City Link had, had closed their waiting area in mid-March, but they would, did say today that they would be open to hosting temporary restroom facilities at their shelter. We're also looking at the library location in the parking lot and we're waiting to hear back from the library. So we're working on that. Public Works has coordinated with City Link to locate some of those facilities and also is working on the pricing of the rentals of those porta-potties. So we are working through that and I think we'll be continuing to monitor as we work with the Continuum of Care and the local homeless outreach team and we'll make adjustments to this plan as necessary. So we are working to solve the problem and, and we appreciate everyone's concern and the number of calls that we received about this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And just for the public, when, when we have a special agenda, there is not a, a new business portion of the agenda. That's why there, there isn't any new business on the agenda tonight, just if anybody was wondering. Is, so with that said, is there any other unfinished business before we go to citizens to address unfinished? Okay. Not seeing any. Madam Clerk, thank you.
Yes, we would be at citizens' opportunity to address the city council and this one item is about that topic. So we received a email from Barb Guyer and she comments that she has a great concern about the homeless population in Peoria and their lack of restroom facilities during this time of social distancing and lockdowns. She contacted the Peoria Public, Peoria Park District with a request of opening the restrooms at the Gateway Building and hiring a full-time attendant there to monitor clean restock as needed. This is a possible solution. And she understands that the city council may be proposing portable bathrooms to be placed outside the downtown Peoria Public Library with a possible addition of adjoining handwashing station. This is something that should come to pass and quickly move beyond the talking stage. And she says she'd like to believe that Peoria is the kind of city that cares for all of its citizens and should strive to help meet their basic needs, keeping human decency and dignity at the forefront. And that concludes the citizens' portion. There is no executive session and so we would be at adjournment.
We entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion by Councilmember Grab, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Seeing no discussion on the motion. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Artis?
Aye.
Councilmember Ali?
Aye.
Councilmember Seer?
Yes.
Councilmember Grab?
Aye.
Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Montalongo?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Euler?
Aye.
Councilmember Riggelbach?
Aye.
And Councilmember Ruckregal?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This evening's special meeting of the Peoria City Council is adjourned and we will be back next Tuesday, April 28th for a regularly scheduled council meeting. We stand adjourned.